Thank you very much, Lord God, our Creator. Please bless this body and the decisions we're about to make. And that it's correctly done and justly done and for the right reasons. In the name of God, amen.
Senator Frank Blas Jr., would you please lead the body in singing the Guam hymn in Shimoro?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. (Singing) I know it's a moro, put it on the top. Can't I matuna, nagito ruiluga. Para i onra, para i gloria. Abiba i isla sen para. Para i onra, para i gloria. Abiba i isla sen para. Todui tiempo y paz para hita. Zangene ne langit na bendisyon. Contra i peligro, na fan safulham. Zeus protei islan Guam. Contra i peligro, na fan safulham. Zeus protei islan Guam.
Senator James Espaldan, would you please lead the body in singing the National Anthem?
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? Oh, the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Roll call.
Senator Frank Blas Jr.
Present.
Senator Calvo.
Here.
Senator Espaldan.
Here.
Speaker Forbes.
Yeah, yeah.
Senator Gethards.
Present.
Senator Shizaki.
Present.
Senator Luhann.
Present.
Senator Palacios.
Present.
Senator Panglinen. Senator Esposito. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Senator Umpinko. Senator Wampat.
Senator Barnes.
Tina Barnes. Mr. Speaker, I wish to report there is a forum.
Thank you very much. Senator Luhann, on the approval of the Legislative Journal dated 2/1907?
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Legislative Journal dated March 19, 2007 be approved.
On that motion, without objections, so ordered. Senator Luhann, on Communications and Petitions?
The Governor's Messages, Mr. Speaker?
I'm sorry?
The Governor's Messages?
No, no, Communications and Petitions on the motion.
Yeah.
Motion due.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the messages from the Governor and Communications from the Governor be messages and Communications received. Move that they have been read and appended to today's Legislative Journal.
On that motion, without objections, so ordered. On Messages from the Governor, Senator Luhann, you're recognized.
I already did that, Mr. Speaker. But, Mr. Speaker, I move that the message from the Guay, Magallay and Guahan, I move that they have been considered to have been read and appended into today's Legislative Journal.
On that motion, without objections, so ordered. Reports to standing committees, Senator Luhann.
Mr. Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that they also have been considered to have been read and also be appended to the Legislative Journal.
On that motion, without objections, so ordered. On the introduction, first reading of Bills and Resolutions, Bill Number 53 to Bill Number 73, as well as Resolution Number 10 EC to Resolution, Resolution Number 10 EC. On that motion, to have them considered as having been introduced and received their first reading.
Mr. Speaker, I move that Bills Number 53, 73, due 73, Resolution Number 10. Considered to have had their first reading.
And have been introduced. On that motion, without objections, so ordered. We are now in motions. Anybody wish to make a motion? Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move the Bill Number 15 EC, an act to amend Section 5, Chapter 5 of Public Law 28-150, rather than requiring a fiscal realignment plan for the executive branch. We move to the top of the second reading.
Senator Panglinen, you're recognized. It's procedural, but I'll let you speak.
That's right, no, I'm asking for a vote on that.
So you'd like to have a vote on that. Go ahead, we'll just have a vote. We have another motion that we have to make right after this because we forgot it. But on that motion, the motion is to, it's going to take 10 votes to pass. The motion is to reorder the agenda to move Bill Number 15 to the top of second reading. On that motion, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. The motion fails by quite a bit. Speaker?
I do not know whether a motion was made already that the, oh, the commendation or resolution or condolences for that matter that have been introduced during this legislative day will be considered as read and also to consider that the body approved the passage of the resolution.
On that motion, without objection, so ordered. We also need another motion. We need a motion to accept the agenda, which we forgot to do at the very beginning of the session. Senator Luhann, you're recognized. Judy, you be up.
Speaker, I move that we accept the agenda.
On the motion, accept the agenda. Objection, so ordered. Judy, Senator Gethards.
Speaker, I was going to make a motion on the agenda.
You may.
I would like to move that notwithstanding the House rules and as an emergency declaration.
One, one motion at a time.
As part of the motion, that Bill 16 be added to the agenda.
Let's, let's break that into two separate motions. The first motion, I'll give you a motion.
My motion is to include Bill 16 as part of the agenda, an act to require that the revenue estimate for the government of Guam for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2007, as contained in Public Law 28-149, be revisited by the administration and for the expiration of appropriations for the operations of the government of Guam as contained in Public Laws 28-149 and 28-156.
Where would you like to place it?
I'd like to place it on the, the reading agenda for this session.
Where?
At the start, Mr. Speaker.
At the top of the agenda?
Yes.
Bottom of the second?
Okay, the bottom, the bottom, the bottom.
All right, your motion is to place Bill 16 on the bottom of the agenda. That'll take 10 votes. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion does not carry, which renders the second motion moot. Any further motions? We are in motions. Anybody else like to make a motion? Okay, there being no further motions, we are now in legislative concurrences. Senator Espaldan, you are recognized on the nomination of Mrs. Helen Embradale, who serves as a member of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. We simply need a motion, Senator, to, to place the nomination on the voting file.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we...
Nomination.
That we move the nomination of Ms. Helen Embradale to serve as a member of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board to be placed on the voting file.
On that motion, without objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Senator Frank Blas, you're recognized on the nomination of Mrs. Gloria Morteira to serve as a member of the Guam Regional Hospital Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules and without objection from the body, I'd like to move to send the nominations of Ms. Gloria Morteira, Mr. Vincent Sablon Santos, Dr. Robert Gatewood, Dr. Bevan Heslani, Dr. Teresa Demian, and Dr. Robert L. Hadok. Move their nominations into the voting file.
All right, the motion is to remove all the nominations to the GMHA Board of Trustees as a group.
As members of the DMHA Board of Trustees.
No objection, without objections, so ordered. Senator Shizaki, you're recognized on the appointment of Jose Pito Terlay, who's Mayor of Municipality of Jodi with the recommendation to do confirm.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. and Ms. Speaker, I move for the inclusion of Mayor Jose Pito Terlay to be placed in the voting file.
On that motion, without objections, so ordered. Okay, we've been a little hopping around here, so I want to make sure I don't miss anything. Would someone like to make a motion on the appointment of Mr. Eddie Lau to serve as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees? Senator Luhann, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Education, General and Omnibus Affairs moved that the appointment of Mr. Eduardo O'Laugh to serve as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees, with the recommendation to confirm, put in the voting files.
On that motion, without objection. Motion carries, we're now at the top of the second reading. Would the Vice Speaker like to assume the...
Speaker Mark Forbes, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept Resolution Number 5 EC as amended by the committee for the purposes of discussion.
Okay, continue.
No, we need to vote on that motion.
If there's a motion to accept?
Yeah.
And the motion to accept, there is no objection?
No objection.
Continue, Speaker Mark Forbes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to move that Resolution Number 5 EC, as amended by the committee, be placed in third reading, and I'd like to discuss the motion.
Yes, okay. Speaker Mark Forbes, you're recognized.
Thank you. This is a resolution that we, we did in the previous legislature when there was an opportunity for us to become members or to have the people of Guam included under the provisions of the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act of 1990 and to include the people of Guam in the jurisdiction of, or in the category of downwinders. I'm not going to, at this time, get into great, an explanation of this. I think that this is an issue that has been discussed fairly broadly over the course of the last several years here in Guam. But I do want to point out that there is a certain timeliness to moving on this as quickly as we can. The Radiation Exposure Compensation Act of 1990 was originally passed to provide benefits to residents of the United States, specifically the state of Nevada, as a result of a recognition that US citizens in the state of Nevada had been exposed through a variety of mechanisms to nuclear radiation resulting from the numerous tests that were conducted in Nevada of nuclear devices, both above-ground detonations and below-ground detonations. I'm sure that some of us, perhaps many of us, have seen film and photographs taken in Nevada of large numbers of civilians literally standing there looking at a mushroom cloud that was bursting over the horizon. In the early 1950s especially, a very poor appreciation, as well as a high degree of secrecy associated with the issue of radiation damage to human beings. There had been work that was done in Hiroshima and Nagasaki in the years following the detonation of the two atomic devices in those Japanese cities that were sending up major alarm signals even in the 1950s. And yet, that notwithstanding, there were in fact cases where civilians were directly exposed, where military personnel were intentionally exposed to radiation, and where large numbers of citizens in Nevada who were downwind of these nuclear explosions were exposed to radioactive fallout. In recognition of this, the United States Congress many years ago passed a law that provided for compensation. And subsequent to that, because of the very good efforts of the Blue Ribbon Committee, the Blue Ribbon Panel that has been investigating this situation in Guam, there have been numerous studies that indicate that the people of Guam should be similarly included as downwinders. And the reason for this sometimes escapes people, but I'm going to try and illustrate it very quickly. In the Marshall Islands, there were numerous tests for many years of high-yield hydrogen bombs, hydrogen-based thermonuclear devices of very high yield, big bombs. And some people think the Marshall Islands are so far away. You know, Guam is over 1,000 miles away from the Marshall Islands. How could it be that we in Guam were exposed? Well, as we stand here today, surrounded by fog, by this haze that has been produced by a volcano that is a few hundred miles north of us, and it smells a little bit like Tadagueru when you walk outside, as we have been recently, in just the past few weeks, exposed to smog that originated in China and Japan, in some cases at least 1,500 miles away from Guam, in some cases more, I should think it would not be that difficult anymore for us to conceive that if we can see and smell and in some cases taste these pollutants, these chemical pollutants that are coming from so far away and just from smokestacks, they're not being shot into the stratosphere, they're not being shot hundreds of, I mean, you know, many, many miles into the atmosphere, they're just coming out of smokestacks. Then it shouldn't be difficult to, for us to conceive that at an even closer distance, invisible radioactive particles that were shot into the upper atmosphere by a thermonuclear explosion could find their way to Guam, especially when, Mr. Speaker, we know that for many parts of the year, that's the direction the prevailing winds are blowing. As it turns out, Mr. Speaker, there has been evidence of circumstances, for example, the story of a man who was assigned as a radiation control officer up at Anderson Air Force Base, who a couple days after one particularly large testing of a thermonuclear device in the Marshals just happened to turn on his Geiger counter up at Anderson. And according to his own testimony, the Geiger counter started to go off-scale, indicating that there was a large amount of radioactive fallout falling at least on Anderson Air Force Base at that moment. Now Guam's not so large, Mr. Speaker, that it is possible that radioactive fallout is falling on Anderson Air Force Base, but not falling in Gigo or Dedodo or Timuning or Agana or Sinahania or Agad or Zonar or Talampagu, all the way down to Melissa. If fallout was falling in any one part of Guam, it was falling all over Guam. These radioactive particles have already been determined by the federal government to be contributory to a wide range of diseases, especially cancers, lymphomas, leukemias, a wide variety of cancers. And, Mr. Speaker, you are fully aware, as everyone else is, that Guam has one of the highest cancer rates in the United States of America. And that high cancer rate has been attributed, on many circumstances, to diet. We don't eat right. Or to heredity, we just have it in our genes. Or to some kind of natural environmental condition. But, Mr. Speaker, it's quite possible that, considering the fact that these high cancer rates tended to rise after the Second World War to this present day, considering the fact that the nuclear testing occurred in the period after the Second World War and for years thereafter, and considering the fact that many of the nuclear particles that were very likely to have been deposited in Guam downwind as fallout have half-lives in excess of 30 years, which means even after they fall, they're still radioactive for many, many, many decades thereafter. In consideration of those facts, it may be that there's an entirely different contributing factor to the high rate of cancer in Guam. And it has to do with where we are, and it has to do with what the United States military did in the Marshall Islands, and it has to do with the fact that Guam was exposed. So what this resolution calls for again is it calls for Guam to be included in RICA and for the people of Guam to receive benefits, just like the folks in Nevada do, as downwinders. And I want to point out that we're not the only ones asking for this. In Montana, in other states outside of, in other states outside of, outside of the Nevada test area, their congressional delegations are waking up to the fact that they also were downwind of Nevada and their own populations were exposed. We're not asking for anything else, Mr. Speaker, other than what has been given to US citizens already. We're just saying that the US citizens of Guam, just like the US citizens of Nevada and other states of the Union, were exposed, that there is clearly a sufficiency of evidence for that, sufficient to cause panels of scientists who have studied this to come to that conclusion. That it's not something we need prove any longer. And we simply want the people of Guam to be treated as other Americans are in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Speaker Forbes. Are there any other speakers on Resolution Number 5? Senator Tina Munya Barnes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of Resolution 5 and thanking the good Mr. Speaker Forbes to include me as one of the authors. Again, this Resolution Number 5 would amend the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, also known as RICA, to include our island of Guam in the list of affected areas by including Guam residents, of Guam during the period of the nuclear testing that they should be eligible for compensation under, under this RICA Act. In April of 2005, the National Research Council of the National Academies submitted a report to Congress, and this report reviewed and analyzed additional populations environmentally at risk for radiation exposure. The National Research Council concluded that our island of Guam did receive a measurable fallout from atmospheric testing of nuclear weapons in the Pacific. Residents of Guam should be, Mr. Speaker, eligible for compensation under RICA in a way similar to that of persons considered to be downwinders. It's also noted that Congress has found that the fallout from these nuclear tests exposed people to radiation that is presumed to have caused an excess of, of cancer, as noted by the previous speaker. This resolution seeks to provide fair and equitable treatment to our people who were affected by the nuclear testings. And there may be hundreds of people that have been suffering and spending money on their illnesses that may be a result of the nuclear fallout. There is a current process in the filing claims within RICA. And, Mr. Speaker, all we are asking within this resolution is that we be included in such process. So, Mr. Chair, I ask that my colleagues share the same sentiments with me in this resolution and support the same. Sisus Massey, and thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you very much, Senator Tina Munya Barnes. Senior Senator Umpinko, on Resolution Number 5?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I do support, I stand in support of Resolution Number 5, as amended by the committee. And it is true, though, that since back in 1946 to 1962, they have actually detonated about, you know, 10, nine or 10 of the bomb over in, in Waitak. If we are going to be, I, I know that we are deserving in terms of, you know, we, we have proved already, at least a professional has come out and said, yes, Guam is affected. But also, can you, and, and just imagine what happened, you know, after the war, that there was a census taken in terms of diabetes, for example, that is now prevalent among our people. And, you know, it was said that diabetes is, is one of the cause, cancer is one of the cause, and some are other things that, because of the, the explosion of the atomic bomb in the Bikini Island, Atoll, that it caused really a wide area, you know, to be exposed to the radiation, Mr. Speaker. And though we do not address it here on the resolution, but I think the people from the Marshals, as well as Palau, as well as Kusari and the Federated States of Micronesia, yeah, and somehow their representatives also should actually stand up and make some claim on this thing because their people are greatly affected as well. Because, yes, it's already been proven, but just like the speaker said, the downwind coming all the way from China right now, we saw the effect that it has several weeks ago and even yesterday, when the entire island was, actually, we had the haze that just covered the entire island. And even, you know, people right now that have respiratory problem were advised to stay inside the house. And so we have seen how the widespread of this can happen here on Guam. And even in Waitak, it's not very far from here, like China is further away, and we see the effect that it has. So I do stand in support of this resolution, Mr. Speaker. But before I sit down, I would like to make a motion, though, that as one of the recipients of the resolution, we should also give it to the Honorable Daniel Inouye, Congress Representative from the state of Hawaii. And because Representative Inouye is a strong advocate for Pacific causes and that he is very, very sympathetic to, to a problem like this. So without any objection, I would like to include the Honorable Congressman Daniel Inouye as one of the recipients of this resolution.
So there's been a motion by the senior senator to add on those individuals to receive the copies of Senator Daniel Inouye from the state of Hawaii. So if there's that motion, if there's no objection, the objection carries. Or the, the motion, the amendment carries. Again, on Resolution Number 5, Senator Ben Pangolin.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I also want to stand, of course, in favor of the resolution for passage by this body to be transmitted to the congressional representatives in the United States and other parties of interest that have worked on this bill. But it would really be not in keeping with, with the spirit of this bill if we didn't really articulate why we're at this point today. I know that there are individuals out in our community who, when they read the title of the bill and it's relative to Exposure Compensation Act, that they think that all we want from the federal government is compensation, that we're just people out here on Guam and all we're looking for forever is for Uncle Sam to come and give us money. But really, ladies and gentlemen, the genesis of this bill did not come about... But really, ladies and gentlemen, the genesis of this bill did not come about without struggle. It wasn't because Uncle Sam said, you deserve this and here it is. It was almost as if we were playing hide-and-seek with Uncle Sam. For many, many years, our people in Guam have been dying of cancer. And whenever we get any kind of field trip out here or medical committee that comes out here to examine it, and we articulate this high level of cancer and the deaths that we see, diseases that really should afflict people as they are in the twilight of their life, except we find that they take the best of us. They take our young men and women, our brothers, our sisters, our aunts, in the prime of their life, and we ask ourselves why. And we ask ourselves, what is it about being on Guam that see, no matter where you go, statistically, a higher level of death attributable to the many forms of cancer that we have? And we thought, there were some of us that thought that there was some things, or there were things that happened in our past that affected our health today. And we asserted that it must have been, and there must have been some exposure to Agent Orange maybe, or any other chemicals that bring about a preponderance of cancer in a population base. But every time we brought this up, people, even in our own community, because we had to point to an authority that had undisputed power over our islands in the past, we had to point to that authority that they knew something. And until the day that we found the evidence, until the day that Mr. Schreiber came forward, all we got were denials from our own federal government, that there is nothing wrong, that all the statistics are normal, that your neighbors and your friends and your uncles and your aunties are not dying from cancer at any rate more than you would find anywhere else. We even had military families on Guam who sued the federal government because they thought they were exposed to things here, that there was a group of families up at Apro Heights Housing that got all sorts of leukemia, just in greater numbers statistically than any other place in the world. And continually, they were fought against and denied that there was something there. Well, we did find evidence that said that we were exposed to radiation. Lieutenant Schreiber couldn't sleep anymore at night and came forward. We found evidence in the dusty warehouse in Arizona when documents were declassified that showed that they took ships that were in the Marshall Islands to monitor the explosions of the atomic bombs and stood there and were rained upon by the fallout. They took them to Anderson and to Moleso and they washed them down there, and the radiation was placed and brought to Guam. And then we found about the atmospheric tests and the likelihood that they come to, that it also rained on Guam. And we found evidence, and that's why we're here, not because of the generosity of any single entity, but because of the doggedness of people on Guam that would not believe that there's nothing wrong with us. And it is through their efforts that this body is now able to stand with them and say, we deserve the same treatment. We're not asking for anything more than the downwinders of Nevada or the uranium miners of Utah. We're not asking for anything more than they are. We're just asking to be treated the same when it comes to radiation exposure and to be able to receive the compensation that is due any other American, to help us deal with the medical expenses of being exposed to radiation and the resulting medical deterioration of our health. And we see it, ladies and gentlemen, we see it every single day. And so I want to congratulate and thank the members of PARs and Robert Celestial and Dr. Youngberg and Dr. Chris Paris, who took up the challenge when the late Angel Santos said, let us investigate this, and Senator Forbes agreed with him, and we impaneled that Committee on Action, and we went and we empowered people in our community, and they did the research and they found the evidence. And we hope that with the evidence that we have acquired, with what we are articulating in this resolution, that our leader in Congress will take up the fight, that we will have an administration that will be responsive to this fight, and that when they go to Washington and they meet with White House officials, that this is one of the issues that they will present, that this is one of the issues that is on their mind, that this is one of the issues that they will use whatever political capital they have to try and work so that it becomes an issue that is addressed by the Congress and the President, and that we are included as Americans truly to ensure that we're able to get the medical services that we are, that we are, that every other American is entitled to, because that's what the compensation is going to go for. This compensation is not going to be used by individuals to go to Disneyland, folks. They've got too many health problems for that. It is to help them deal with the medical expenses associated with the diseases that they acquire because of exposure to radiation. And no longer is there doubt in anybody's mind. The National Academy of Sciences have come about, in their own independent review of the information available to them, that Guam receives significant exposure to radiation and that this exposure to radiation leads to a deterioration in the health and the preponderance of cancer will be suffered by these individuals. And so, Mr. Speaker, I would like to conclude my comments on this by asking my colleagues to support this resolution. Thank you for the introduction, but I would like to make one amendment to the resolution, Mr. Speaker, and that is on page... If I could find it, I think I have it in my other copy, Mr. Speaker, which I didn't bring.
We'll give you a one-minute recess to take a look.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Hey, Ben, if this going to enhance the resolution, go ahead and do it.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The, the amendment would be on page...
Let's see, here's, let's see, here is back in session, let's see, here's back in session. Go ahead, Senator.
I would just like to amend the resolution, Mr. Speaker, to, on page four in the first line, where it says, whereas such increase of radiation may lead to serious health, I would just change the "may" to "has led to serious health," and other environmental problems for life in such areas.
On that motion, without objection, the motion carries.
Once again, Mr. Speaker, I want to thank my colleagues for their consideration on this matter and urge their support and positive vote on this resolution. Sisus Massey, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Calvo, and then Senator Tenorah. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on it? Senator Guthbertson, then Senator Lohan.
Thank you very much, Speaker Forbes. Again, I rise in support of Resolution Five. I want to acknowledge again the late Senator Angel Santos for, for again, being at the forefront in regards to the issue of compensation for members of our community that have been exposed to radiation as a result of the tests at Enewitak and Bikini Atolls in the Marshall Islands from nineteen forty-six to nineteen sixty-two. I want to also acknowledge Mr. Robert Celestial. I've known Robert for, for many years, and, and here is a gentleman that has had the tenacity to move forward in trying to build awareness, not only in Guam, but in the federal government, as a result of the radiation exposure experienced by our people. I had the opportunity to meet with Charles Burt Schreiber in his trip to Guam, and in my dialogue and discussions with him, I remember we were out there at Skinner Plaza, and I had a chance to sit down with him, drink some bottled water, and, and then he talked a little bit about his experiences living on Guam. And for Lieutenant Schreiber, anyone who's had an opportunity to, to meet with a fella, he's a very unassuming man. He doesn't carry any pretenses, he's a fairly humble guy, and he's a man that, when you meet him, he's an individual that you figure he's gone through life, and he's from a small community, and he's dealt with his life, and he's moved along. But there was something about the gentleman and about his human compassion and for the need to, to right a wrong, and to right a wrong based on the knowledge that he had And when we sat down and he discussed with me, again, what he had, that day in Guam, when he had been doing his normal testing, and for a brief moment, he thought we were under nuclear attack. This was brought up to his higher-ups, and of course, with the higher-ups, there was that acknowledgement, and then basically that's it. Somehow, between those days and back in the fifties and, and now, and again, I bring back the history of Senator Angel Santos, the tenacity of PARs and Robert Celestial, that issue that had been dogging in the back of Lieutenant Schreiber's mind and soul came out. It's, it's kind of ironic when you examine the resolution and you see findings by the National Research Council, which corroborate the story that was given by Lieutenant Schreiber in regards to not only that dust cloud that passed through our island, but as well as records on ships coming to Guam, and these are ships that were a part of the nuclear testing, and the washing down of those ships of, of nuclear contaminants, and the washing of those nuclear contaminants into our harbor's waters. It was kind of like you have this government bureaucracy, the federal government of the United States, the most powerful nation in the world. This bureaucracy that had knowledge, and whether it was in, in report and findings from tests that were done in the air or in the water, they were all there black and white, and yet no acknowledgement by anyone with any authority in the government of the United States. It took a gentleman and his conscience to open up and fess up to the historical fact. And then, of course, with him fessing up to the historical fact, the dogged research that had to be done in finding documents, again, mentioned by our, the co-sponsor of the bill, the earlier speaker, found in a, I don't know whether it was in a, in a, in a filing cabinet or a box in Arizona, but the historical facts and the tests were found. I move forward in the passage of Bill Resolution Number Five, but I also think of other issues, and those are other issues for other days, in regards to the island of Guam, and whether it was radioactive testing in the fifties, or, excuse me, atomic testing in the fifties, or the spraying of Agent Orange in Vietnam, and the storage of Agent Orange here in Guam, or the spraying of our lands with DDT and other pesticides in the fifties and sixties. But there is a long history in this island, and it's only backed up by statistics and numbers, and whether it's having the highest rate of cancer, the highest rate of diseases that deal with neurological disorders, whether it's lycobotic or Alzheimer's. But there is a story, an unfortunate story that has been told over these past fifty years. And as we addressed the issues on radi, radiation exposure compensation in Resolution Number Five, we must also look towards any other secret historical fact that may now be in a filing cabinet or a box in Washington, D.C., or Arizona, or some other federal agency. Anyway, Mr. Speaker, I'm in full support of Resolution Number Five, and I ask for my colleagues also to vote on the passage of Resolution Five EC. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Tenorah, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I also rise in support of Resolution Number Five and commend these primary sponsors and, of course, my colleagues who have also risen to support the resolution. As you had indicated earlier, prior legislatures have done a great amount of work. I was one of the members on the Blue Ribbon Panel created under your, with your work and along the other senators who have been here for so many years, and of course, worked along with my, actually, as my cousin, Robert Namalik Celestial, which grew up over here in Agatna, and since he moved up to Dedodo, but he has been a great champion of the cause, and he is at the heart of PARs along with the other people who care about the many people who have fallen ill as a result of the many diseases which plague individuals who are exposed to this type of terrible curse, if you will. Many of the people in the Pacific Islands have, have been victim to the same thing, Mr. Speaker, and this is something that is way overdue. I concur with the gentleman from Baragada with respect to wanting to be on a par with the rest of our nation with respect to federal recognition of the fact that the exposure of our people and the, the many hardships that has befallen them and their loved ones should be no less rewarded in the sense of making sure that we also are afforded the same opportunities as all those people who have also been of no action of their own exposed to this plague, this disease, the many things that come, and cancer is one of them, but there are others, are things that many people, even the military families themselves, have had to undergo. And this resolution, this resolution will go to our Congresswoman, and I would encourage her to make sure that she does champion this cause, and I believe that she does, and I believe that she has the best wills and, of course, intentions to make this issue known to our federal government and make sure that our representatives and our senators and the U.S. Congress bring this to reality, finally to put Guam on the same field as all those other individuals who, and, and of course, our, our states that have been given the opportunity to take advantage of something that the Congress has recognized is an issue. And so I too also stand and I ask that my colleagues do support this. I, I expect unanimous support from this, because this is something that is time since I expect unanimous support from this, because this is something that is time sensitive, and we do need to make sure that our Congresswoman and our Congress gets the word from the Guam Legislature yet again, that this is something that must be done in justice for our people. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tenorio. Senator Guthers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. I'd like to commend the sponsors of the resolution. I'd like to commend the sponsors of the resolution, and say that, for those of us who were here at the time of these tests, of course, there are serious concerns about our future health, and the health of our family members. For those of us who have lost family members who've passed on, we are also concerned about the unexplained causes of their deaths. Mr. Speaker, I believe the United States government has a moral responsibility to make good its actions regarding radiation testing and other testing that has occurred in our region, particularly to the people of this territory, and to other areas that have been exposed to this kind of activity. The biggest concern I have, and I question the United States government, is why have they kept it a secret for so long? And why have the leaders of Guam had to force the issue in order to get some recognition for what happened here and in other parts of the Pacific? It's interesting that our government, as a national government, proclaims its transparency. But when it comes to activities such as this, the blinds close, and the documents, for the most part, are hidden from Americans, including us here on Guam. I'd also like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to add a new resolve clause into the resolution. And it would be on page 12, after line 7. And the resolve clause would say as follows. Add a new resolve clause on page 12, line 8 to read, resolved that members of the Judiciary Committee of the United States, and members of the Judiciary Committee of the United States Senate, and members of the Judiciary Committee of the US House of Representatives conduct on-site public hearings on Guam to receive in-person testimony from the people of Guam who've been affected, or whose family members have been affected by radiation exposure. The perp, yes?
Senator Guthers, do you have, is that amendment your?
Yes. Copies will be made right now, Mr. Speaker. I have it here. The importance of this is to put a little more action into the resolution. The resolution has all the history, has the facts. It is to be distributed to the key entities within the United States government that should be aware of our experience. But I think it would be very proactive to petition the Senate of the United States and the House to actually conduct public hearings on Guam, to receive testimony from our people who have actually been affected by radiation fallout. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I shall make copies for every one right now.
Thank you. Let's take a one-minute recess, so we can have the body read the amendment, and then we can speak on the amendment.
I've just received additional information from the President of PARs, and I'd like to withdraw the amendment, as they have already worked on a process to proceed, and this might delay it further. Thank you.
Senator Guthers, withdrawing your amendment. Senator Blas on the resolution.
Mr. Speaker, does this say that there's no objection to the withdrawal of the amendment, right?
No objections.
No objection.
Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And first off, I want to thank the authors of this resolution, Resolution Number Five EC. And more importantly, too, I'd like to thank Mr. Robert Celestial and the PARs group for continuing the efforts that they have to gain the proper recognition that our people deserve, based on this issue here. And I rise in support of this resolution. I think it's about high time. But at the same time, I think that it's another sad day in our relationship between Guam and the United States, when our people have to again continue to fight for something that is their right. You know, if you look at our Constitution, we have the right for the pursuit of happiness, to live healthy, to live prosperous. And when we have to fight for things that should be obvious, you know, there are many indications in this resolution of the United States, of our own government, admitting that tests were conducted, admitting that there were readings, radiological readings on Guam, you know, admitting that there should be ways that we can correct some of the problems, they can correct some of the problems that have been caused by their testing, yet not even recognizing our people, and we have to do that ourselves. I think it's high time, like, you know, good senator from Baragada Heights, right, Dr. Guthers?
Mayela.
Mayela? I thought it was Baragada Heights, man.
Not yet.
Not yet. University of Guam. You know, that, you know, she says it's, this has to be done. You know, several years ago, as part of a organization that helps kids grant wishes, to grant their wishes, one of the alarming things that we found, I found with another board member, was that there were a number of people on our island, not only the kids, but we've got a number of calls in our organization, of inquiring about the kind of assistance that our organization can give to individuals who, you know, had to go off for medical treatment. And what was alarming was the number of adults that were stricken with cancer. You know, there was a conversation, and there was a testimony earlier given by my good senator, colleague, you know, from my village as well, Baragada, you know, that, and I think it was also the speaker, who made mention that, you know, there was talk about cancer can be attributed to diet, can be attributed to gene, genes, a number of things. And I don't know whether they're using this as the excuse as to whether, why they have not provided this kind of assistance to our people, but, you know, the argument about the food that we eat is probably, probably causes the cancers that our people have. Just very, very recently, I witnessed the death, the burial of a close relative of mine. I submit to you, Mr. Speaker, you know, despite there being McDonald's, and Taco Bell, and other places that serve food that's not indigenous to our diets, this individual ate things that he had eaten 60 years ago. He never changed his diet. You know, and so it could not have been attributed to some new thing that was introduced into his body through the diet. And I'm sure that's the case with a number of other people, another, individuals that have been stricken by the same thing. I can go on and on, Mr. Speaker, and be more passionate about this thing, but you know, one of the things that is more important is, again, I rise in support of this resolution, and I urge my colleagues here to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Lujan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I also rise in full support of Resolution Number Five. You know, as the good senator, former Speaker Ben Pangolin said, that this compensation is not for these people to go to Disneyland, but merely to seek the medical treatment that they so deserve. You know, we've been talking about this resolution, and working with Mr. Celestial, and the folks from PARs to get closure in this whole scenario. You know, Mr. Speaker, tomorrow, we're going to be burying one of our brave men, and then on Friday, we'll be burying another one. You know, and as we hear news of fallen warriors, be it in Afghanistan, or Iraq, or the Horn of Africa, because it hits home so closely, and so dear to our hearts, Mr. Speaker, we wonder, as we hear eight fallen men today, we await the news to see if any of those fallen heroes are one of ours. You know, Mr. Speaker, this resolution does the right thing. And as we debated previous resolutions, be it for the radiation fallout, be it war reparations, the atrocities that had happened here in Guam, and we, as we also discuss and try to get information on the impending military buildup, you know, Mr. Speaker, it kind of takes me aback, as to wonder why that we Americans, we loyal Americans, and this week will be burying two Americans, two fallen Americans, two fallen American heroes, that we have to sit and debate issues granted to all American citizens. Mr. Speaker, it's mind-boggling that we have to debate these issues. You know, as each one of us have had the opportunity, have had the opportunities to meet congressmen and senators of their prospective states, and municipalities, and districts. When we seek their help for attention placed to Guam, and for issues that affect our issues, affect our people, the questions most of us ask, I know I ask, if this were your district, if this were your state, how much would you have to lobby to try to get these addressed? They would say, are you kidding? If we didn't, and if they didn't address this, it'd be catastrophic for those representatives. We were elected by those, our constituency from those states to address our issues. Mr. Speaker, these are our issues, very similar to issues of other Americans in other jurisdictions that are afflicted with what we're seeking for, Mr. Speaker. As equal Americans, we want nothing less. Again, as our fallen heroes will be buried in full military honors, we want the full restoration as well of honors, full honors, to the Americans here in Guam, and not be discriminated because of where we live. This resolution goes far into making, again, the Congress do the right thing, for the right reasons, for the right people, for the right time, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I've got a question, and maybe I can yield, maybe to the author or authors, and if it's not answered, maybe I have an amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Proceed.
It's on page seven, under the resolved, starting in line 12, it says, "Resolveth aminebentinuebinadislaturen Guam, does hereby the people of Guam petition the United States Congress to amend the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act of 1990." Mr. Speaker, I'm afraid that if we just generalize and ask the members of Congress to amend this, that they would probably be relying on each other to do the amendment, and then will be forgotten again, be forgotten Americans, and if, you know, if there's a reason for that, there maybe is, but if not, I proffer up an amendment to be able to hone in a little more on, maybe, honing in a little more?
Does the author want to yield to the question?
Maybe I just throw up the resolution, I mean, the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, go ahead. What is your amendment? Well, we'll go ahead and, do you want to proffer your amendment now?
Okay, my amendment will read, again, on page 11, I haven't passed it out, but I'll pass it out, but it will be...
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a one-minute recess while we're getting that passed out.
Mr. Speaker, I withdraw my amendment. The question was answered, I didn't realize that it was already included in a previous amendment, and therefore, that's why it wasn't included here. So with that, I withdraw my amendment.
All right, thank you. Does that conclude your comments?
I'm done. Thank you.
Any other speakers on the motion? Senator David Shimizu.
Wait a minute. I just wanted clarification, Mr. Speaker.
Senior Senator Pinkel.
Okay. I yield to my good colleague. There's a, on this resolve clause, this is amended, okay, to include Guam in the jurisdiction on the downwinders, it didn't say who's going to make the amendment. That's, I think his amendment is to ask someone to do it, like our Congresswoman.
If I may be allowed to yield to the question?
Senator Pangolin?
Yes. The reason why that's not being done is, we are sending this to the Congresswoman, but we are also dealing with other members of Congress who are sponsoring bills on behalf of their constituents, and they, we have had conversations with them, and met with them, and they have in principle agreed that in their bill, they'll include Guam for participation and eligibility under this. So, we didn't want to just say, to pinpoint on who should be doing it, because anyone receiving this resolution could technically do it, but there are ongoing discussions with those that are working on other bills before Congress right now, that have agreed to include Guam.
Senator Pinkel?
No, I do realize that, but, you know, he made a point here, that if you requested so many people to do it, so we depend on each other to do it, and then it would end up, nobody will do it, because we all depend on each other that somebody will do it. And so, my, I think Mr. Senator Lujan's amendment is right on line, it really haunts in terms of, somebody takes the responsibility of doing it, then make sure that we're in there. Otherwise, we'll be taken for granted again.
All right. Do duly note that we will, you'll have an opportunity as a senior senator to speak on this again, if you propose an amendment. This time, we'll recognize Senator David Shumizu.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So many things happening. First of all, Mr. Speaker, I stand full-heartedly in supporting the resolution. I just have a couple of, yeah, it's on already, thank you, amendment, if we can just go, it's a very small amendment, on page 10, line 17, "Whereas the people of Guam, USA, humbly request..." I'd like to just delete that, the word "humbly," in view of the fact that, you know, they knew what they were doing, and they kept this away from us. So, I don't feel too humble about telling those institutions that, you know, we strongly request that they make good... request that they make good on what they've done." Now, the, so that's my motion, Mr. Speaker, to delete.
All right, can you restate your motion real quick?
My motion on page 10, line 17, delete the word "humbly." It's very simple.
All right, so on line 17, on page 10, to strike the word "humbly," and simply say, "Whereas the people of Guam, the people of Guam, USA, request that..."
No, I wanted to place it with the word "strongly request."
Oh, you want to replace it with "strongly." All right, so, on the motion to strike "humbly" and replace it with "strongly," to read "US, strongly request." If there is no objection?
Mr. Speaker, again, on the bill, earlier, it was discussed that we sent so many, that, you know, that on the last result, that the Speaker and the legislative secretary tested adoption, and we sent copies to everybody, almost everybody in Congress and in Senate, and yet, there is a concern, I agree with Senator Luhan, that maybe what we need to do is direct our own non-voting delegate, Congresswoman Madeline Zebardalio, to take the bull by the horns, as we say, and introduce, you know, that Guam be included. And there is, and I can just put in, and if we take a one-minute recess?
All right, we'll be in recess.
Let me look at him.
I'll be in recess for a minute.
Yeah, okay. And giving credit for this amendment, it's compatible with the last speaker, if we go on page 11, line 14, after Congress, please add, quote, "Through our member of Congress, the Honorable Madeline Zebardalio, to amend."
So, it will be through its delegate, Madeline Zebardalio, to amend?
Yes, "Through our member of Congress, the Honorable Madeline Zebardalio, to amend", and then, you know, the radiation exposure.
On the amendment, Senator Palacios, do you have a, if no objection, motion carries.
One more thing, Mr. Speaker, I don't know if it would be appropriate at this time, but there is a proposed bill that we can use as a template to attach to the resolution, which is really a bill to amend the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, to include the territory of Guam in the listed of affected area with respect to the claims relating to the atmospheric nuclear testing shall be allowed downwinders. Now, I don't know if it would be, how we can use this as a sample legislation of the desires of the legislature without not having the opportunity to look at it. So, we can attach it on, if it's the desire of the committee, but you just haven't had the time to really look through this substantive bill, so maybe we would allow the Congresswoman with this amendment, and then this can be forthcoming at a later date. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Palacios on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, not necessarily that I object to the amendment, but that the current provision, I think, allows for a wider chance that any member of Congress can actually introduce, and I agree with the Senator from Barigada, that there are other jurisdictions that right now deal with this issue, and that the inclusion of the word Guam in there probably would carry what we propose here to have done. And to narrow it down to just a few selected members is actually, you diminish the opportunity, that's how I see this. And, on the other hand, the Congresswoman from Guam should, is expected to take the lead on this one, even without naming the name, and that is why I prefer the original version as it is right now, and I cannot support the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
All right, any other speakers on the motion? If there are none, without objection, motion carries. We are now on Resolution Number Four. We'll take a one-minute recess.
Hello. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Legislature is back in session. Senator Calvano.
I'm sorry, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move to place Resolution, actually, I'd move to first accept Resolution Number Four, EC, as amended by the author.
On the motion, without objection, so carry.
I would like to, Mr. Speaker, yield to the author of Resolution Number Four, the Senator from...
Do you want to make a motion?
Oh, excuse me, let me make a motion to place in the voting file.
All right, on the motion, you want to yield to...
For discussion, with the discussion.
Yeah, I understand, we haven't moved it yet. So, on the motion to place in their reading, you want to yield to Senator...
Is the resolution out?
Every member should have a copy of the amended substituted resolution. Senator Pangolin, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I want to stand, of course, as the author of the resolution, in support of passage of this resolution, and it's a little bit of a misnomer, I guess, because it's titled "A Resolution," but it's a resolution that is in fact required by an act of law. So, just to kind of dispel any misgivings about the effect of this resolution, that it is not a plea to the governor, that it is in fact an authorization, and once passed, the authorization, free of the process of a resolution, has the full effect of law. So, it's not just a resolution that is a petition, but it in fact is a resolution that by the operation of existing language makes it law. And so, I just want to be very clear in that, in that this will have the effect of law, and not just the effect of a petition, as most resolutions have. The resolution's subject matter is fairly simple, Mr. Speaker. It is a resolution that, according to public law, according to Section 22413 of 5GCA Division Two, Chapter 22, Article Four, which authorizes the governor a revolving line of credit. And that law is in effect today, as it is, will be in effect tomorrow. Now, the authorization granted to the governor for this revolving line of credit is up to $6 million. If the legislature wanted to increase that revolving line of credit to $10 million, then the legislature, through the passage of a resolution, then, by the operation of this law, allows the governor to increase it to $10 million, with the additional $4 million being authorized for a resolution, which is exactly the subject matter of this resolution. But this resolution and the authorization to increase it to four is for one specific purpose, and that is to allow the governor to access that additional four for the purpose of fulfilling a partial payment to the COLA recipients pursuant to the Rios et al. v. Camacho Superior Court Case Number 0206-93, a final judgment by the court that the retirees are owed, are owed the COLA pursuant to a law that was passed by the legislature, and the award determined by the court was up to $123,58231, for the purpose of meeting the obligations of that COLA. Now, what is also very important is that we articulate the fact that the governor challenged the COLA. This is not a gift to the retirees, this was a public law that was passed, and which the governor decided to challenge the award and the operation of the law that entitled these retirees to a COLA. This was not something that everybody agreed we should give, it was, everybody agreed to it when the legislation was passed, but when the retirees moved through the legal process to enforce the implementation of the law, that the government of Guam, via the administration, challenged the law, and that these retirees were not entitled to that COLA. So, much like our petition to Congress to have them include us on the RECA for those exposed to radiation, that the retirees actually went to court and asked for the implementation, but the governor did not support it. He spent millions, hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's not a million dollars in legal fees, to challenge the right of these retirees to receive that COLA payment. And so, they went to court, they went to trial, and basically, they lost. The governor lost the court case, and in losing the court case, the governor had the right to appeal the ruling of the Superior Court. But the governor decided that he had lost the case, and he waived his right to appeal the case, putting finality on the award of the COLA recipients, that it is no longer challengeable by any other action pursuant to law. Now, we have a court case out there that is trying to intervene, but it's really to intervene after the fact, and all of that will get resolved, but the fact of the matter is, as to the entitlement of these retirees to the COLA payment, it's undisputed, it's in the court, it's, the judgment's been rendered, it's been docketed, and the governor waived the right of this government to appeal that ruling. Now, somebody may ask, why are we addressing this issue today? We are addressing this issue today because we've addressed it in the past, and for some reason, the governor has refused and did, or did not implement the actions of this legislative body to pay out the COLA recipients. It got tangled up with regards to the issue of the debt limitation of the government of Guam, in addition to the governor not moving forward, when that question really was not an impediment to the implementation of the COLA payment. Prior to the election, this legislature, or the 28th Guam Legislature, along with the governor, agreed that they would issue a $23 million payment to the retirees, they went through the whole process of identifying the funds and the funding sources for that $23 million, but for some reason, the governor, the legislature passed the law, the governor signed it into law, and then they decided not to implement it. They decided to, for whatever reason, divert the $23 million to some other obligation or some other priority, and then told the retirees that you don't have the money, and we don't have the money, and we're not going to pay you. And then, there was another attempt by the governor to appease, maybe is the right word for the retirees, to say that they will be paid, and another scheme was dreamt up to allow this government to access through a consortium of lending institutions, $123 million to pay the retirees. But that scheme did not come without its baggage, because the scheme that the governor presented to this legislative body in the prior legislature, and then asked us to consider during this legislature, is very clear as an intention, that it does not want it to go forward until the resolution of the borrowing case, the Limteaco v. Moylan, I guess, or Limteaco v. the government of Guam, with regards Camacho, with regards to the debt limitation of this. And ladies and gentlemen, we have made these promises to the retirees, and I fully support making that promise a reality. And one way of doing that, which we were able to, our own research, determine, that was accessible for an immediate partial payment was through this line of credit legislation. And unfortunately for the retirees, the governor decided that, while we were discussing the $10 million that we would authorize in the additional four, the governor decided to exercise his authority under the existing legislation to access the $6 million for some other purpose, and that was to meet payroll, as we all know. But you know, ladies and gentlemen, well, this government, with its huge pocketbook, and it may be empty, but it's huge, that the government has access to the collection of tax revenues to work out the financial challenges that we have. And we say that that is so important, and nobody disputes that, but what we need to focus on is the financial challenges that these retirees face, and they are facing them for some critical, critical needs, that in some cases are really a matter of life and death, a matter of deciding whether or not to go off-island for much-needed medical care, and in lots of instances, ladies and gentlemen, it's really even not medical care for themselves, but medical care for their children, their grandchildren, their brother, their sister. This is all not focused on the single retiree, but to focus on what they have to deal with every single day, and the challenges they find, and the limited resources that they have, based upon the fact that they're living on fixed income. And we're not talking about some healthy individual, that he needs extra money, or his brother needs money for medical care, that can go out and get a job to bushcart, or to paint a house, or odd jobs, because we're talking about those that are not able to do that because of the stage of where they're at in life, that they just don't have the physical capacity to be able to go out and earn more money, because for, in some instances, they're suffering from medical ailments that will not permit them to do that. And in some instances, it's not even phys, it's just old age. And really, ladies and gentlemen, when we look at who's better able to cope with the financial crisis that's facing them, this government or these retirees, it's this government that can do that, and it's up to us to be able to fix that, and work towards finding a solution to that. But I think it's just as critical for me, as somebody who represents the people of Guam, that I devote effort and time to help these retirees find the financial resources through the payment of this COLA, no matter how little it will make a difference in their lives, ladies and gentlemen. And that we have the opportunity to act on that, to implement it, without the impediments that is presented to us and the other alternatives that are being presented by the governor, and the other alternatives that have been considered by this body, that we have the opportunity to present to the governor an alternative without any legal impediments for the exercising of that. It will be a challenge, ladies and gentlemen, but why is the governor so reluctant to do this? I don't understand, and that's something that he's going to have to explain to the retirees themselves, if he ever finds it in his heart to face them once again. And it's a sad day when he will not, and does not, and we hope that he'll find it in his heart. Maybe after Sunday Mass, or whatever, he'll find it in his heart to face the retirees and explain to them, because these individuals don't want to eat him alive, they just want to talk to him. They want to be able to dialogue with him, as the good speaker always says, so that they can understand why it's not being done. But it's hard, it's hard for these individuals to accept that, when this week, the governor will be releasing almost $10 million in EIC payments to those also that are working in our community and are struggling, and are due and owed, and have a right to the earned income tax credit payments, as a matter of law, and as a matter of our inclusion, as part of the mirror image of the Internal Revenue Code. The governor found it somewhere. Is it because the governor wanted to do this, that he settled the case, that he didn't take it to court, and he wants to do this, that he's going to release and has somehow found the ability to find $10 million over several months to put aside so that this day can come? I don't understand why the governor could not find it in his heart, that when it was first discussed and first awarded this finality, and he signed off that he will not appeal the judgment, that he could not find the same caring and compassion in his heart to put aside some money for the CIC payment, so that today, he could have been releasing some checks. And ladies and gentlemen, what we have, again, is the opportunity through the passage of this legislation, to truly provide an opportunity for the governor to find that compassion in his heart, to help these individuals who are on fixed income, who face the challenges that we all are facing, but don't have the ability or the resources to... that we all are facing, but don't have the ability or the resources to cope, that we do, in order to be able to access some additional money for the basic necessities of life, of food, of medicine, of healthcare, that can truly provide them a sense of, not even comfort, but at least less pain in their lives with this $4 million. And as I said, anybody can get up and challenge, are we doing the right thing, that everybody's faced with a financial challenge? But it's who has the ability to cope. And these individuals, their ability is much limited. Because number one, they're on fixed income, number two, they're retirees, number three, they're facing all sorts of ailments that beset them as they progress in their lives. And that this is one way we can provide some relief. And I ask my colleagues, as you have done in the past, where you have found, prior to the election, you found the ability to cast a vote to pay these retirees a COLA, find that same, same compassion that was there after an election, to vote on this resolution, to provide the opportunity for them to receive some measure of compensation. This is the beginning, it's not the end. Just as the financial challenges that we are facing with our government is the beginning and not the end. But we, and the rest of the government, have the ability to cope with that, these retirees just don't have it. And it is up to us to find it for them. And I ask for your consideration, for your kind, kind heart, to be able to see it through a vote in the affirmative on this resolution. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Espisho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in full support of this Resolution Number Four, and I want to commend the retiring speaker for his resolve to getting at the bottom of the whole COLA debacle. I want to commend former Speaker Ben Panglinen for getting to the truth, because this is what this issue really boils down to, getting to the truth. And I want to, for the record, state that I was a part of the last legislature, were the final days of our session, where the $123 million COLA was addressed, and the $23 million funding source, which came from bonds. I was one of those members here that questioned the administration officials as to whether or not they expected me, or granted, a legislative body, to believe that you could take some financing which came from bonds, particularly the Atumon Redevelopment Fund, and other funding streams that came from bond financing, to earmark those to the COLA. And of course, it was election time, and they all said, for the record, and as a matter of public record, and the people listening, particularly our retirees who are following this issue very closely, and who were promised that they were going to get this money on several occasions. The administration testified, as a matter of public record, Mr. Speaker, that yes, they spoke to the bondholders, and it's possible to divert some of this money. And as we looked into the actual cash receipts in these accounts, we discovered that $23 million was not readily available. And so a member of the legislature made a motion to delete that amount by saying, well, listen here, why are we going to penalize the administration officials by making a $23 million cap, if for some reason there's more than $23 million, then they would give the administration an added opportunity to pay as much sums as are necessary, or in those accounts, to satisfy this court ordered judgment, or at least make some kind of meaningful commitment from the government side to recognize this court ordered settlement. And so, be it as it may, the legislature was told, as a matter of public record in a session like this, that the money is there, and that in no time, especially before Christmas, the retirees will get their cost of living allowance, or you'll start to see the government move to paying a partial commitment on those court ordered settlements. So fast forward to today, Mr. Speaker, and I want to commend Speaker Ben Panglinen for not giving up. And I want to illustrate a point by saying that everything that Speaker Ben has brought to the, how he has brought this issue to the forefront, should be exactly how we should handle the upcoming session, or any upcoming public hearing with respect to any testimony that this legislative body would have to receive from the administration officials. It's very important that anyone giving us this kind of information be sworn in, and I've said this over and over, this Resolution Four that Speaker Ben has introduced, highlights the need to have any legislative proceedings be done in a fashion by which these individuals are sworn in. Mr. Speaker, the retirees have a right to know the truth. There's no debate now before the legislatures to whether or not this is an obligation. Before the court ordered that this COLA be paid, there are a few of us in the legislature who stood up and said, this government has a moral obligation to our retirees to pay the cost of living allowances and to pay the supplemental annuity. You had individuals like Speaker Ben and Attorney Mike Phillips lead this charge for 13 years, until the court finally ordered that this is beyond a moral obligation, it's an obligation that the government of Guam has to follow the laws that this legislature passes and the governor signs into law. And so this Resolution Number Four would extend an additional $4 million line of credit for the governor to exercise, to once and for all, have some kind of token message to these retirees, that we acknowledge the government's obligation, and the total COLA debt would have to be considered in our overall deliberations in how we're going to avert this financial meltdown that this government of Guam is now facing. So I stand in full support of this resolution. I couldn't commend good friend and colleague, Speaker Ben, for illustrating the point, that unless people are held accountable to what they say, we're going to continue to get this kind of information, and it's going to be treated as such, that there's going to be no consequence to anything that this legislature is told. We're told that the money is there. When someone went into the AS400, I believe it was Chairman Calvo, to point out that it doesn't look like there's $23 million in these various accounts, the next step was to remove that $23 million figure and just say, whatever money is in there, use it. And that was what the legislature did. I knew full well that you could not take these bond finances and use it otherwise. It's the same thing as you going to the bank, or anyone going to the bank, and getting a mortgage loan, and using that money for other than what that loan was intended for. I'm just not very happy, I've never been happy with how this legislature, both the 28th and now the 29th, is handling the kind of information that it's receiving, and I'm just not happy, for the record, Mr. Speaker, that this legislature, this, our current leadership, both in the 28th and 29th, has not done anything to hold anyone accountable to come to this legislative body, to tell the legislature that the money's there, to make the retirees believe that come Christmas time, they would get their cost of living allowances. Would you believe, Mr. Speaker, that our retirees believe the things that we say so much, so that they've already began to spend some of this money that they were anticipating? Granted, they didn't spend the full amount, but they started to spend some of the money that they were anticipating, the small percentages that the administration, that the government was saying they would get before Christmas time, they started going out and starting to buy their things that they needed, they'd been waiting so long, because they believed that they would get this money. And at the end of the day, they did not get that money. So when is the legislature going to stand up and hold people accountable for the things that they say? But more importantly, when are we going to be part of a process which exposes the truth, and which does nothing but the truth, the whole truth, and we all understand the oath that we affirm to take as elected representatives of this territory, this island community? So I stand in support of Resolution Four. We need to give the governor additional opportunities and means by which he can right this wrong, and to, in pass this resolution, would give him the authority for the $4 million line of credit. When they had the public hearing on this resolution, I believe that the legislature, again, was made to believe, and Senator Guthers, the gentlewoman from Mingilau, she pressed the administration officials, the representatives, and to ask, is it, if this passed, will the governor use this money to pay the COLA? Is the governor going to use the $6 million to pay the COLA? And if you go back to the record, Mr. Speaker, even you yourself would conclude that that was a sentiment that was expressed at that particular time, in that particular period. And our retirees deserve the truth, they deserve to know exactly what this government, what this administration and this legislature is going to do, and we need to start doing what we say we're going to do, Mr. Speaker. Otherwise, we continue to mislead our people, and I do not want to be a party to that. I stand in support of the resolution, I hope that this passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Shimizu, did you, all right, Senator Guthers.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, since last year, many of us here had the opportunity to attend a number of the meetings of the Lola COLA group. We were invited to come and just listen and observe. And I think I attended about six of those meetings, and at those meetings, the highest leaders of our territory, including our governor, came and sat with the officers of the Lola COLA organization before hundreds of the COLA retirees. And I heard them say that we're not going to let you down, we're not going to lie to you, we are going to address this matter, this is a priority to us. And they said, particularly our governor, that before the election, you will receive your COLA monies, based on the court order. I heard that with my own ears, Mr. Speaker, as did literally hundreds of other, others who were present at that meeting, and people who saw it on television and on the radio. Well, for various reasons that have already been discussed, that promise was not kept. And yes, we understand the fiscal issues and the challenges facing our island today. But how can we look into the eyes of our elders and not feel that somehow and some way, we have let them down? Senator Panglinen has come up with a resolution, now modified, to reference authorizing the borrowing of $4 million, to start the process of paying the court ordered COLA recipients, part of what is due to them. This week, you will hear how the Department of Revenue Taxation is getting ready to process and release the checks for the first payment for the EITC recipients. That particular action is also based on a court order. We, as legislators, have to do two things. One is keep our promises to our Manunko COLA recipients, and two, to visibly show the court that we are establishing public policy, and that we, in fact, are petitioning our governor to meet the responsibility of this government to the COLA recipients. I think, Mr. Speaker, this is a beginning, it's a very important resolution, it should have unanimous support from this legislative body. Most importantly, Mr. Speaker, let us not be a part of any activity that will make any false promises to the people who have waited so long for the resolution of their entitlements. This is a beginning Resolution Four. If the governor is sincere, he would immediately take the message in Resolution Four and act upon it. That is my hope. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. On the motion, without objection, motion carries, will be in brief recess.
As in the matter of Bill 15.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move, to accept Bill Number 15 and act to amend Section 5, anyway, Bill Number 15 EC as substituted by the Committee on Finance and Taxation.
For purposes of discussion.
For purposes of discussion.
His motion to accept Bill 15 is substituted by the committee for the purposes of discussion. On that motion, without objection, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 15 EC as substituted by the Committee on Finance and Taxation into the third reading.
And to resolve.
And to resolve to the committees whole.
On that motion, without objection, so ordered. We will resolve it in the committee of the whole, presumably you have witnesses you wish to contact.
I'd better call them up.
I think you better call them up. So we will take a recess to set the room up for Committee of the Whole and the Chair. You will be chairing the Committee of the Whole, Senator Calvo?
If the Speaker obliges.
I will oblige.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
So, so we will, we will do so?
Yes.
We will recess for that purpose?
Yes.
Okay, we're in recess, and so we're ready to--
Can I ask a question before your recess?
We're just resolving in the committee of the whole on Bill 15.
Okay.
Okay.
Who's going to come?
Ah, he's going to call.
I'm going to call.
All right, we'll go into recess, and then we'll come back.
That we, there has been another bill that's been passed, a substitute of the substitute, that has been passed out to the body, moved to accept it?
For purposes of discussion.
For purposes of discussion.
All right, the motion is to substitute Bill Number 15 EC as substituted by the Committee on Finance, Taxation, Commerce and Economic Development with Bill Number 15 EC as substituted by the Committee on Finance, Taxation, Commerce and Economic Development, as further substituted by the Committee of the Whole, such bill having been passed out. Is there any objection to that?
No.
No objection to the motion carries. We are in the committee of the whole, I will be chairing it, so that the author of the bill is in a position to answer any questions, should they be directed at him. We will be going section by section through the bill. So we'll begin at Section 1, and members are invited to either ask general questions, although I do ask you to limit that, so we don't wind up in endless questioning, and then entertain motions to amend or delete, beginning with Section 1 of the bill. Senator Espisho.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, it appears to me, and I'd like the chairman maybe to clarify or provide further insight, that Section 1, under revenue tracking, would require that the Director of Revenue and Taxation and the administration determine no later than 30 days after the close of each month of the fiscal year, to do a revenue tracking for the balance of the fiscal year. Now, my first question is, isn't this something that--
Is already being--
Is already being done?
All right, you have that question, go ahead.
Sure, I will. Actually, that's why if you look at Section 1, we have Section 5A, which is already, it's not underlying that, it's already part of the budget law. What we've added is B, Fiscal Realignment Plan.
Right.
And Fiscal Realignment Plan is, again, addresses that if there is a fluctuation in the, in revenue trackings, for revenues for fiscal year 2007, 3% or greater, then the governor and the administration is tasked to provide for a fiscal realignment plan. So yes, you're correct, Section 1, 5A, is a rehash of the current budget law, and what we've added is Section B.
I understand that, but in Section B, it shows a 3%, if there's a 3% fluctuation, then the governor is required to do certain things. Now, we already know that the administration has said that we're projecting, or GovGuam is projecting, to collect $434 million for this current fiscal year. I think that the legislature should just put that amount in. I mean, I want to point out that Chairman Calvo, you've had numerous roundtable discussions with the administration, you've elevated it to a oversight hearing, and in the last oversight hearing that Chairman Calvo called, the administration was still saying $447 million as its revenue projection for the current fiscal year, until I pointed out that based on their own presentation, Mr. Speaker, they've highlighted that we stand to collect about $434 million. We already know what was said by the administration-- We already know what was said by the administration. Why are we doing a... Why are we going to pass a bill that would require something to be done if there's a 3% fluctuation in revenues collected versus revenues adopted? My first amendment would be to just incorporate that $434 million amount. I believe what we should be doing right now is requiring the governor submit a fiscal realignment plan that requires him to revise the budget for 2007 to appropriate and spend no more than $434 million. We're going a roundabout way of making the administration do something when everything I see in this bill presented to us, that, number one, it doesn't have the teeth required, and number two, it asks a question for which we already know an answer for.
Confine your comments to Section 1, as opposed to referencing the entirety of the bill.
So, in Section 1, Mr. Speaker, we're asking a question that already has...
Do you have a question?
We know the answer to.
What's the question?
Section 1B.
So, your question is...
Why are we still requiring a 3% fluctuation when we already know that the legislature adopted $457 million for '07, and the administration admitted to a collection, potential collection of $434?
Senator Cavill, would you like to answer that? Thank you very much for your comments, and as you can recall, this bill was introduced in the first week of January. And again, I want to thank the previous speaker for his questions, but obviously, the intention for the introduction of the bill early in the term, the first week of the 29th Guam Legislature, to deal with certain issues that we felt needed to be addressed. Obviously, there were media reportments on allotments not being received by Guam Public School System, by UOG judiciary, reports of utilities not being paid, and possible disconnection for certain agencies. And so, it was the sentiment of myself as Chairman of the Committee on Finance and Taxation to address this proactively. And so, that's why this bill was introduced, based on what general information was going out there. Obviously, there are certain things that have happened afterwards. We had a public hearing on January 18th on Bill Number 15. At that time, the administration said they were tracking at $447 million. Then, obviously, again, you had the State of the Territory address of the governor, and that's when he made mention of a financial crisis. And with that financial crisis, a deficit elimination plan would be put forth. After that, there was an executive order placed out by the acting governor, Acting Governor Mike Cruz, that not only was there issues that dealt with long-term deficit elimination, but there actually cash... There was a cash crisis, and that that needed to be dealt with. There was a... I think if you recall, on the $434 million figure, that the administration is... What you're alluding to, obviously, if you look at that PowerPoint presentation that was supposed to be sent, given to us, I had some concerns even in that, because it's not even a revenue tracking, it's cash. And so, I think it would be very dangerous for, from what the earlier senators mentioned, to put that $434 number in, when in actuality, what was talking was cash collections and cash receipts, as well as cash expenditures, when we obviously know that's not revenues. I think we all must take note that the administration has promised a revised budget dealing with both income, as well as revised expenditures... Excuse me, revenues, as well as revised expenditures, was supposed to come today, but now we've gotten wind it'll come on Thursday. And so, to put any type of number, especially based on the $435, $434 that he's alluding to, especially when the $434 is cash, not the revenue projections, I think would be, at this point, premature. Again, the governor has stated that they will be presenting a revised budget in this Thursday. So, again, at this point, I don't think that would be prudent to change to the numbers as earlier indicated by the...
So far, there's been no motion at any rate. Are you making...
Well, Mr. Speaker, just a point of clarification, based on what the previous speaker said. So, revenues are now not to be considered the kind of cash that's being collected. The administration said they have a potential spending of $496 million, yet they project $434 in collections. So, there's a $62 million shortfall. So, if our own OFB chairman is saying that you can't consider that $434 as revenue, because it's... There's more to other variables, other than the cash coming in. The administration, that day, said themselves that we stand to collect $434 million. I mean, if... Let's call a spade a spade. I want... We can amend subsection B, and I could prepare an amendment. If this subsection B were to stand as is, Mr. Speaker, we would have to collect less than $444 million in order for this section to kick in, yet we know very well, the administration testified that we stand to collect $434 million, which is already a $23 million shortfall for this fiscal year. My office has been tracking $432, so there's less than a percentage point different from what the administration is tracking versus what we have been tracking. And I'd like to ask Chairman Cavill what his office has been tracking for the record.
Okay, well, thank you, Senator Spishio, Senator... Oh, Speaker Forbes.
I don't have a problem with the discussion about revenues, but I don't think that this subsection, subsection B, is the appropriate place to have it. If you read subsection B, the purpose of subsection B is to simply create a mechanism by which automatically the governor is required to kick a plan to the Guam Legislature, dealing with cost containment, austerity measures, government reorganization, other actions to be initiated. There's no arguing the fact that the language as submitted would require such a plan to be submitted if Senator Spishio's statements were true, or if anybody else's statement is true. What the good senator seems to be wishing to do is adopt a new revenue number for FY2007. Now, it would seem to me logical to do so in the context of the new FY2007 budget that we're supposed to be dealing with come Thursday. That would seem to be the appropriate time to talk about when you want to adopt a new revenue estimate. But if he really wants to adopt a new revenue estimate in this bill, it would seem to me the appropriate place for it to be placed in the bill would be as a new section at the end of the bill, and I don't know why we're debating it in this particular section. So, you know, if he wishes to move it...
Well, what I'm saying...
I'm just suggesting that the proper way to do this, so that we don't get hung up, is that we entertain that amendment, if he wishes to make the amendment, as a new section to the bill.
What I'm saying is that the administration already testified that there's...
That's perfectly fine. I'm not arguing the point.
Because we're gonna pass this bill, and then the administration's gonna say, "Oh, no, it's not $434, it's $447," so nothing is gonna happen.
Yeah, but we're certainly not gonna pass the bill until we get to the end of it. I just don't think this is the appropriate...
Can we have a little order in this, okay? Since I'm chairing it. Okay, Senator Pangolinen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I understand certainly the... All the comments and the positions that the various speakers are taking, but if we believe that when we strike a revenue that's 3% less than the projected revenues, and that we need to kick in austerity measures, I think the... For me, the better amendment... Not better amendment, but the amendment that I would propose is that we just put this as a policy, so that you strike out fiscal year 2007, and just say, "If projected fiscal year revenues, based on collection experiences, is a 3% adopted in the annual budget law, then they shall kick in, kick this in, so that it survives this budget, and it takes it to the next budget, and the next budget, and the next budget." That becomes a fiscal policy of this government and this legislative body, that when that happens, that we need to kick into austerity mode, so that it, you know... And that would be the suggested amendment that I would have on this.
That's a reasonable amendment. Senator Spishio, would you be willing to put your amendment in writing and attach it as a separate subsection or section at the end of the bill? All right, we'll set that aside. Senator Pangolinen, are you prepared to move that as an amendment?
Yes, I would, and it would be, you know, on line 11, if projected fiscal year revenue... If the projected adopted fiscal year revenues...
So, on line 11, you would strike the number 2007?
Yeah, just strike 2007.
Okay, and page 2, the amendment, we don't have to put this in writing, it's fairly simple. Page 2, line 11, the number 2007, the amendment is to strike 2007?
And then, on line 13, just revenues as adopted in the annual budget.
Okay.
And strike out public law.
Well, let's do them one at a time, just so we're clear, so that the clerk doesn't get lost, since we don't have this in writing. The First Amendment is to, on line 11, page 2, strike 2007. Is there any objection to that? Without objection, the motion carries. The Second Amendment is on line 13, to strike Public Law 28-149, and replace it with the following words, "The Annual Budget Act."
Right.
Okay. "The Annual Budget Act," in place of Public Law 28-149. Is there any objection to that?
I think I need some clarification.
Certainly.
You're going to delete Public Law 28-149, right?
Right.
Okay, then, in lieu thereof, you're going to put down, adopted in...
The Annual Budget Act.
But what would be the reference be, in terms of the Annual Budget Act?
It is a term of art for the annual act that the budget has passed, and this would make it applicable to every fiscal year, not just the current fiscal year.
Okay.
Well, let's take it one place at a time, so we don't get messed up. Okay. On that motion, is there any objection? An objection, the motion carries. Is there any further motions on Section 1? Okay, we are now in Section 2, modification of planned expenditures, yada, yada, yada. Any amendments, questions, motions? Motions to delete? Anything on Section 2? Section 2 going once, going twice. We are now in Section 3. Section 2 is down. We are now in Section 3. Any motions to... Senator Pangolinen?
Speaker, I just want to make an amendment to Section 3, to add a new subsection D that requires that the...
It's what you passed out, right?
Yes, it's been passed out, and all it would really is, is that the reports that are generated and given to the legislature regarding the cash, reports, that they shall also be posted on the websites of the governor's website, Department of Administration, BBMR, and Revenue Tax.
Okay, is there any objection to the amendment? There being none. The amendment passes. Any other motions to delete, to amend? Questions on Section 3? There being none, Section 3 is completed. We are now in Section 4. Any amendments, motions, questions, motions to delete? Anything for Section 4? Then, Gintaza, please, we move on to Section 5. Section 4 is down, Section 5. It's on page 5. Any motions to delete, questions, anything on Section 5?
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make an amendment, a minor amendment. In page 5, line 20, I'd like to replace "within" with "no later than" 60 days.
Okay, on that motion? That's on line 20. No later than 60... So, "within 60" is replaced by "no later than." Within 60 is struck, "no later than" is substituted. On that motion, is there any objection? On that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's a good motion, but I'm wondering if we should put in parentheses, April 19th... I'm sorry, May 19th, 2007.
We don't know what the effective date of the act is yet. Depends on when he signs it into law.
Oh, okay, you got it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On motion by Senator Cavill? Without objection? Motion carries.
On Section 5, Mr. Speaker? So, in Section 5, this is where the legislature is saying that the revenue estimate for fiscal year 2007, there's obviously already a 3% variance, so that the administration is required to know later than 60 days that he shall provide a revised fiscal year.
Absolutely. Okay.
Now, my question is...
You want to get to yours?
What internal mechanisms do we have from the legislative body to require, or to make the determination, rather, that we are surpassed, we have surpassed that 3% variance?
Wait, wait, wait. Now, you're discussing Section 2 all over again.
No, 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 this is in Section 5, because we're...
No, no, Section 5 says what the English language in it says. It says, "Within 60 days of the effective date of this act, there shall be a submittal." It has nothing to do with the 3%. 3% is a separate mechanism.
Yeah, because we're...
This is Senator Guthers' amendment, and it says very simply what it says. "Within 60 days of the effective date of this act, it has to be sent to us."
But if the administration comes back and says they're tracking $447...
Whether there's a 3% or not, this section says, "A new budget must be sent to us."
But the administration would not comply, I believe, because it goes against the spirit of the law, which...
Senator Spishio, I can only refer you to the English language of the section.
Well, I know, and obviously, everything we pass is written in English, Mr. Speaker. This is why we're in the mess we're in, because there's no accountability. So, I'm asking, what kind of assurances can I get that the legislature will make that determination on the what we're tracking? I asked...
But you're asking a question about Section 2, instead of a question about Section 5.
But the mechanism to... For the governor to submit this is on Section 5, but if the governor comes back and says...
This is a good question for Section 2, Senator Spishio. It really has nothing to do with Section 5.
So hypothetically, I propose a situation. Hypothetically, if the administration comes back and says they're, oh, they're not tracking $434...
Senator Spishio, do me a favor. Here's what we'll do. Let's finish Section 5, and if the body is willing to entertain further discussion in Section 2, then we can go back, but I'd like to finish Section 5 if we can.
Okay, but my question is still very appropriate to Section 5, but we could proceed.
I don't agree. But, all right, so on Section 5? Senator Guthers?
A minor addition on page 6, line 1. We need to add, after Public Law 28-149, add "and" Public Law 28-150.
Okay. On that motion? The clerk has that, 28-150?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
I'm asking the clerk. You got that?
Yeah.
Okay. On that motion, without objection? All right, it's ordered. Okay, we've now completed Section 5. Senator Spishio, I know you have at least one amendment you'd like to move. Senator Spishio, one way that you could advance the argument that you want to advance is to do an amendment to that effect, which can be discussed. Is your amendment in writing yet? Okay, so why don't we just take a one-minute recess, so that you can get them in writing, and then we can go ahead and proceed on the subjects you wish to talk about? One-minute recess.
No, 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 Mr. Speaker, I didn't offer an amendment, so there's nothing to withdraw, but I just want to point out that when Speaker Pangolinen converted Section B into a policy of the legislature, that made what I need to do moot, because that addressed that concern. The biggest concern I have with this bill, in future budgets, we're going to need to require some kind of mechanism where the legislature, in and of itself, will track these revenues on its own to make those determinations, to ensure that this bill, if ever became law, would be complied with. I do have the amendment that I was going to put in this bill, it's contained in Bill 37, but for the record, Chairman Cavill assured me that he would have the hearing on this bill, and this would be the mechanism to require the checks and balances that we've been needing in this entire process.
Very well. Okay, that concludes the discussion on the bill. Is there a motion to rise? Senator... No. Let's have a full motion to rise.
Okay, move the Committee of the Whole rise with the recommendation to include all the amendments made, and to place Bill Number 15 in the third reading, file for voting.
On that motion, without objection? Motion carries. Committee of the Whole is risen. The legislature's back in session. Senator Calvo? Check to report on the Committee of the whole.
Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Finance and Taxation...
Committee of the whole.
Has risen from the Committee of the whole.
No, the Committee of the whole has risen.
Oh, the Committee of the whole has risen, with Bill number fifteen EC as substituted by the committee, as further substituted by the Committee of the whole, and with, as making a motion to...
Recommendation to do pass.
With recommendation to do pass with all amendments, and...
Intact.
Intact.
And place in third reading.
And move, and make a motion to move into the third reading file.
Okay. On the motion, is there any objection? No objection? Senator Pangolinan, you object to the motion? Well, let's get out of second reading before we worry about third reading, okay? On the motion? No objection, so ordered. Okay, we've consumed everything in second reading. We're going to take a one-minute recess to consult with the clerk and with everybody about how we're going to vote, okay? So, we're going to go into recess for just a minute. The chair is back in session. Having exhausted everything in second reading, we are now considering the daily file, beginning with the third reading file. Senator Pangolinan, I believe you had a motion about voting without engrossment. Yeah? Are resolutions four and five already engrossed? Okay, all right. Very well, on that motion, without objection. So ordered, we are about to begin voting, beginning with resolution number five.
Resolution number five EC, as amended by the Committee on Education, General and Omnibus Affairs, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Mark Forbes, Tina Rose, Munia Barnes, V.C. Pangolinan, and others, relative to petitioning the United States Congress to amend the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act of nineteen ninety, Public Law one-oh-one dash four-twenty-six, as amended by Public Law one-oh-one dash five-ten, thirty-one, thirty-nine, parenthesis, U.S., forty-two, USC, twenty-two, ten, and Public Law one-oh-six dash two-four-five, to include Guam in the jurisdiction down winders.
Winders. It occurs to me, since this is a resolution, we do have the option of voting on this by show of hands. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. On the, on, on, on the resolution, all those in favor of adopting the resolution signify by raising your hand. The records show that the legislature has unanimously adopted resolution number five. On resolution number four?
Resolution number four EC, as amended by the author, introduced by V.C. Pangolinan, Frank F. Blas Jr., Edward J.B. Calvo, and others, relative to authorizing Imaga La Ingwahan to arrange a line of credit for an additional four million dollars pursuant to section twenty-two, four thirteen of five GCA Division Two, Chapter Twenty-two, Article Four, to make available a total of ten million dollars for partial payments to the COLA class pursuant to Superior Court of Guam, case number SP zero-two-zero-six dash nine-three.
There's three calls for a roll call. That is what is necessary to do, a roll call. I also believe there are some people who are going to recuse themselves on this vote, so we'll probably have to do a roll call for that purpose. A roll call.
Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Calvo, Senator Esfaldon, Speaker Forbes...
Come again.
Senator Guthard, Guthard? Senator Issu Jackie? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Luhon?
Mrs. Speaker, if I were to be allowed to vote, I would vote yes. I have to reveal that I am a beneficiary to my mom's estate, who's a COLA recipient.
So, you would personally receive a...
Yes, I will.
Okay. Are you asking to be excused from voting?
Well, if the body decides that that's the...
Well, you got a request.
That's my request, yes.
Senator Luhon is requesting that he be excused from voting on the resolution, insofar as he is a beneficiary?
That's up, that's up to the body.
Well, is there an objection to excusing Senator Luhon from voting?
Yes.
There is an objection? I just want to know, is there an objection?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll have to take it to a vote. Well, that's fine, but we have to take it to a vote. There's an objection. All those in favor of allowing Senator Luhon not to vote on this because he perceives he has a conflict of interest, please indicate by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, the motion carries. Senator Luhon is excused. Continue with the roll call.
Senator Palacios?
As much as I like to vote on this bill, as a yes vote, I ask to recuse myself also. I am a member of the class, COLA class.
Okay, we have another motion, I'm sorry. We have another request to be excused from voting. Is there an objection?
No objection.
No objection? Senator Palacios is excused from voting. Are you moving to excuse yourself from voting? It's too late to reconsider your vote. You needed to reconsider your vote before I went to the next person. I presume you mean reconsidering your vote on Senator Luhon excusing himself?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, we already got to Senator Palacios, so it's not possible now. Roll call, continues.
Senator Pangolinan? Senator Respichu? Senator Shimizu?
Senator Shimizu?
Speaker, I must also ask this body to excuse me from voting on resolution four EC. Mr. Speaker, it would be unethical for me to vote this evening, because I am a member of the COLA class that would be a beneficiary of this resolution when acted upon by the governor. Mr. Speaker, if I were allowed to be voted by this body, my vote would be affirmative, because there is already a judgment by the Superior Court of Guam in favor of the retirees who are entitled to the COLA settlement. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, that's a request by Senator Shimizu, I presume, to be excused from voting. Is there any objection to excusing Senator Shimizu from voting? Speaker? You object on excusing Senator Shimizu from voting? Well, I don't know, he said he didn't want to, so he's asking to be excused. I understand, I understand the effect of the vote, but I, I am treating this as a request to be excused. So Senator Shimizu is, is requesting excuse, he is requesting to be recused from voting? All those in favor of Senator Shimizu being excused from voting, please signify by raising your hands. One, two, three, four, five. Senator Shimizu, you must vote.
Mr. Speaker, the will of the body, notwithstanding, again, I'm going to say notwithstanding, the conflict of interest that I have to bear, and the, and the, the body wants me to vote. I indicated earlier that I asked to be excused, they want me to, to, to vote on that, then I still have to abstain, because it's an ethical issue on my part.
Abstentions are not permitted during voting.
Except what?
I think we should go on. You just go on if you don't want to vote.
I mean, you can pass.
But, you know, we've had two times already, what's the, it's so inconsistent. Mr. Speaker, I think the body already decided so.
I know, so you can pass, but an abstention's not a vote. Do you wish to pass?
I'll pass.
Okay. Continue the roll call.
Senator Tenorio?
You will deny it, you have to vote.
Speaker Minko?
Aye.
Senator Wampat?
Mr. Speaker, I asked to also be excused from voting. I would definitely benefit as, from this class as well.
Okay, Senator Wampat is also requesting to be excused. Is there an objection? I'm asking one more time, I need a response. Is there an objection?
Is there objection? Yeah.
Okay, Senator Minko objects, we have to put it to a vote. All those in favor of excusing Senator Wampat from voting on this question, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, wait, I'm sorry, one, did you have your hand up, Tina? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Senator Wampat is excused from voting. Continue with the roll.
Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker?
Sorry, it's not time for you to speak.
Okay, thank you, I'm just saying, Mr. Speaker.
I understand, the, the body voted.
Members of this body.
The body voted, Senator Shimizu. Continue with the roll call. Continue with the roll call.
Senator Shimizu?
I'm sorry? Can we keep it down? Can we keep it down? We're voting.
Senator Shimizu?
Senator whom, Shimizu? Senator Shimizu, you have passed once, you have a second.
Mr. Speaker, before I vote, if it's permissible, notwithstanding the House rules, again, I'm asking this body to reconsider the potential conflict of interests that I have.
Are you asking for a motion to reconsider?
Yes, I am, notwithstanding the House rules, Mr. Speaker, and I'm asking this body to excuse me.
Okay, we'll entertain that motion. We'll entertain that motion. All those in favor of reconsidering legislature's action on the vote with respect to the excuse of Senators Shimizu from voting on this matter, is there any objection?
Thank you.
Okay, then, now that we have reconsidered, Senator Shimizu, you must re-request, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, again, I ask this body to excuse me from voting on resolution four EC.
You don't have to re-explain it.
No, I'm, no, I don't, I don't, I'm just asking.
All right. Senator Shimizu is asked to be excused from voting on this resolution. Is there any objection, he's being excused?
No objection.
Okay, without objection, Senator Shimizu is excused.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, though I'm a retiree, but I don't benefit on it, so...
Thank you for that point of information.
You're not part of that class.
The vote on resolution number four EC, eleven, aye, for not voting because they are excused from voting, the resolution passes. On substitute bill number fifteen?
Substitute bill fifteen EC is substituted by the Committee on Finance, Taxation, Commerce and Economic Development, and is further substituted by the Committee of the Whole, introduced by Edward J.B. Calvo and others. An act amend section five, chapter five, of Public Law twenty-eight dash one-fifty, relative to requiring a fiscal realignment plan from the executive branch and for other purposes.
Roll call.
Senator Frank Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo? Senator Esfaldon? Speaker Forbes?
Again.
Senator Guthard? Senator Issu Jackie? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Luhon? Senator Palacios? Senator Pangolinan? Senator Respichu? Senator Respichu?
Yes, you already said yes.
Senator Shimizu?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Minko?
Go ahead and pass.
Can you, can you...
Sure, just to prolong it, yeah.
Senator Wampat?
Again.
Senator, Speaker Minko?
The vote on substitute bill number fifteen, fifteen ayes, zero nays. Substitute bill number fifteen is unanimously passed by Minabentin Otsin, I mean, Nuebi, Nalastirangohan. Sorry. We're not done, we still have confirmations, and, since almost all of the confirmations, with the exception of the appointment of the mayor of Zotnia, our boards and commissions, I believe, yeah, they are, it is possible for us to entertain the entirety of the boards and commission members in a single motion, although it would be necessary, would be for someone to get up and make a motion and then read, everybody except the mayor of Zotnia, and then we could vote en masse on that one motion. No, someone has to stand up, make the motion, read the names and the positions, rather than voting individually on each one, because they're all boards and commissions.
You're the only one with the list.
I'm the only one with the list. Here you go. That'll make it simpler.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the body vote on the nominations of Helen M. Berdalio, on the nomination of Gloria R. Mortera...
Let's say what for?
Okay. On Helen M. Berdalio to serve as a member of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, Gloria R. Mortera, Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees, Vicente Sablon Santos, Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees, Dr. Robert Gatewood, again, Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees, Dr. Bevan Gaslani, Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees, Dr. Teresa A. Damian, Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees, and Dr. Robert L. Haddock, I'm sorry, my apologies, Haddock, Dr. Robert L. Haddock to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees, and on the appointment of Jose Pito Terlahe...
No, 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 belay that, not the appointment.
Okay, and then finally, on Eduardo, excuse me, Eduardo R. Ilau, to serve as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees.
On that motion, is there any objection? Okay, the, let the record show that all of the appointees contained in the list have been unanimously confirmed by Minabentin Nuebi, Nalastirangohan. Okay, on the, on the confirmation of the mayor of Zotnia, I guess we should do that by roll call, yeah? Yeah. Okay, roll call, on the confirmation of Jose Pito Terlahe as mayor of the municipality of, or of the district of Zotnia.
Can I, can I move on understanding the House rules, by unanimous consent, that we confirm the nomination of Mayor Pito Terlahe?
Can we do that, or is it like a director, or can we do it that way?
Yes, you know, with the body's consent, without any objection.
Will the body, will the body stipulate to unanimous consent for the confirmation thereof? Okay, then let the record show that the Minabentin Nuebi, Nalastirangohan has unanimously confirmed Mayor Jose Pito Terlahe as mayor of the district of Zotnia. And with that, we have exhausted the entirety of the, no, we've exhausted the entirety of the agenda. What we could do is we could adjourn to a date specific, or we could also adjourn, subject to call of the speaker, and I could simply call us in when we are, when we are knowledgeable of the, yeah, because I can do that within two hours. Okay, so the motion is?
Mr. Speaker, motion to adjourn, subject to the call of the speaker.
Okay, on that motion, without objection, the motion carries. The legislature is adjourned.